Good morning.
Good morning.
I just got in the house.
Okay. Good to see you.
Good morning. Uh, we're going to the shower. Hello, you doing it's good to see you.
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
Mr.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is our string. I said I'm not going to crash your party.
You were a idiot.
Mr. Green, let's get down to text. Yeah, he had singer down there.
Does that kind of stuff.
Okay. It is.
Sounds good. They didn't, I think, would have left to be honest. We did go in slightly.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Run them down, but we'll have them make stuff.
Constitutors and senators. They've already. You know, that's what we want to talk about. Uh, we can't take care of.
Exactly. All right.
Thank you, Jer.
We're going to log on next.
Or is it not letting you enjoy this moment? Uh, call Skyler and let him fix everything? You don't want us to have someone available in the room?
It's about seven. It's like me out there, right? Catch a ride with your back.
Ready to do recording. Yes.
Recording stopped.
I have the recording chair on this.
Recording in progress.
And then I want the.
I will send a message. She's getting something better.
And there's all the.
No, I'm gonna find you.
Those are the attachments for today.
Yes, the recording's on. I can possibly just go ahead and start.
It's all good.
I used to do that on the really great winter up there. I like coffee, but I take. Ladies and gentlemen, we've conquered our technical difficulties. Would like to call the OSH Ringrose Council regular meeting. May fifth, twenty twenty-three. Ten oh seven. Like to call the order. Uh, welcome everyone here to our meeting today. As the OSH has started anything, I've asked my brother councilman Red Corn to say a prayer for us. I wanted him to acknowledge something else today. Please rise. This is today's identified as our missing murdered and endangered women. It's affected our people. I asked him to pray for all tribes, all people who's had that. And the other comment comes is that we we have to go to prayer. I've come from a long week. I know some of you have also. And that we need to talk and pray for these families in the world. Shangri-La.
Awata konbra.
Oh.
I ain't got seen that she was coming to walk on the easy. They're the ones that are ha kiss to my aapa. I was cut out of a car. So they eat that a car on silly. Yeah, she did a make. How do I have a juice? Uh, who that you say it's a late. Uh, chess or all that say that I'm calling up at a. Uh, hominy on my god, see that it's a leg. Uh, I'm calling up at a. We're all representing these families here over those people. They come and say, ah, they 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 kiss to my. I'm gonna share that it's a late. That you bless each and every one of our counts. For all the families in their homes. And I said, you bless our government. The OSH people and our grandchildren and our children and grandchildren. At this time, Lord, we we ask that you missing and murdered indigenous women. From all across this country. Our hearts are sorrow and in mourning. For these people that have been impacted by such a a bad spirit. Once called be easy. What do you love that I'll be here. Uh, I'll keep you out of the other. But this these things we think are good, but they're not. We just ask that you bless and teach us. Uh, what comes. We 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 don't, we 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 do what peaceful and and good and gentle minds do. As OSH people, we pray for our relatives here. And we pray for our young people in state meets today going after their gold medals and silver. We ask that you bless them and their efforts, that they take that winning spirit all the way through their life. Do their jobs and as they carry on their families, they they don't stop. We've seen it over and over as OSH people, we ask that you let them know they're not alone. Our hearts are with us as they compete today. We have people in mourning, our OSH people, lost, lost relatives, lost family members. We ask that you bless and take care of them. And I just pray that you bless this meeting, give us good minds and we take care of this. What need that I walk. Who that I walk. That you gave to us, this good gift. Well, Joe, though, uh, this uh, this uh, business of the oil gas and other minerals. We are the sheena. Cap on us, all these things I asking you name.
Wait, we know. Please recede. Like a roadblock, please.
Councilman Red Eagle.
He will not be present today.
Second Chair, Mr. Law.
Present.
Councilwoman Curry. Chairman, or Councilman Red.
Go back to Curry, please.
Curry, Councilwoman Curry.
Now go.
Uh. Councilman Red Eagle.
Here.
Councilman Rebar.
Present.
Councilman Chappellford.
Here.
And Chairman Law.
Here. We have.
Six present, there is four.
Thank you, please. Uh, with that, I'd like to go into new business. Uh, Mr. Jim Tramnally, we have for us a broadband project. Could you please join us? Good seeing you.
I've got the maps up there.
The presentation, just the presentation.
Well, I'm supposed to.
And we have, we have it in front of us also. There, sit down available.
I'm gonna borrow.
Okay.
One of these.
Uh, if you will, please. Let's go hard copy so we can do the presentation to get to the.
I'd like to make the presentation available for.
Yes, sir. Yes, Jim.
So first of all, I want to thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to do this. I'm sure that uh, we came and wanted to talk to you, the middle counsel. Uh, as you guys have all heard, that that we, the nation has received. Uh, been very fortunate in getting obtaining grants for broadband development. We currently have about sixty million dollars of funds, federal funds for broadband. Uh, we're requesting another. About twenty, about thirty million more that we've requested. Uh, we've applied for and. What we currently have is nearing completion for the environmental analysis and historical preservation, which means we're a few months away, probably, of actually starting construction, which is why we wanted to come talk to you. Because uh, we wanted to make sure we had your blessing before we start digging into the subsurface and mineral rights and all the subsurface and things like that. So we wanted to show you and talk to you about what our plans are, what the overall direction's gonna be and all that. So like I said, we we currently have three grants already marked for three point five million. NTIA, which is the biggest one, the National Telecommunications Infrastructure Administration, for forty point six million. And then we got a. A USDA RUS, World Utility Service Reconnect three grant for thirteen point nine million. We've also applied for the Middle Mile Route, NTIA.
We have.
For eighteen point one. And we also for the reconnect four, eleven point five million. If you look at the next slide, which is uh, what currently was done, uh, and already been done by the LLCs, uh, they put in from Pohaska to Grey Horse. That's in place, operational and running. They're nearing completion on the route from Pohaska to Bowery. And that route uh, includes two towers. The Grey Horse route had three towers on it. So with those two in place. The next thing was, uh, and Bill Fenton is here with the IT department, but they built out Pohaska, the the city of Pohaska. They built the infrastructure backbone uh, here and they utilized CARES funds to do that. And that was all put in place. And that's what ties it all together at this point. If you look at the next slide, which is, shows the yellow routes. The yellow lines are uh. Actually, the final lines that we have designed utilizing NTIA and the reconnect three grants that are there. Uh, it goes from. From McCorr or Monk City all the way to Highway eighteen. That goes south on, you know, to that intersection. And it also goes, ties into the OIS Bowery leg and goes out to Bartlesville. Also from there, the reconnect three grant will take it from Pohaska down to Hominy. Then we'll also go from Fairfax over to Hominy via Highway twenty. And then we'll continue on to Skytuck and down to Tulsa. We also have a routing design which follows Highway eleven. Barnesville A Van south to Skytuck. And also going up from Barnesville through Highway one twenty-three to Highway sixty. Uh, we've been working with the casinos as they're building their new Bartlesville Casino. Stroke of Fortune for us. The existing casino is gonna be vacant by the end of the year. It, for us, it's perfect because it has raised floors, it's got generators, it's got fiber optics, it's got plenty of land. It's out away from the main center, you know, it's four and a half miles south of Highway sixty. So we're gonna make that a data center. And we're gonna house servers and all our equipment and make it a full blown data center.
For a five G network?
Uh, well, the five G is is cellular.
Yes.
And we're not gonna actually do cellular networks because that's telecommunications, that's cell phones. Uh, we're doing the the fiber optic.
Yes, sir.
Block in.
Thank you.
But all of our towers, we are gonna make available co load, co loading, co load with cell cell companies that can put five G network radio heads on our cell towers and pay us a fee for using our towers, which increases the coverage in OSH County for cell service. And then we're also gonna have down in Tulsa, a disaster recovery site. In case something happens, we can fall over, fail over and switch to that. So the next line, the next slide, which has the uh, current designed yellow routes and the overlaid red designs uh, that currently exist, show the complete network as it's currently funded. The next slide adds the Middle Mile Grant. And the Middle Mile Grants are highlighted in orange routes. We're basically going a separate, different route to Highway sixty on the east side. We're gonna go from Fairfax up by Burbank, actually a little west of Burbank to tie that in. We're also gonna go from Grey Horse to Hominy a different route. And then the big one is from Pohaska, we'll go north above the Drummond Ranch, come back down through Scheidler and then go over to By Call Lake and then down to Highway sixty. The thing about this one, I wanna point out is. If so many places in OSH County will have double, will have what's called a loop. We'll have two routes to get to anything. So if our partner gets cut, it doesn't bring the service down. We have fallback routes that we can go through. And uh, as a network designer, that's, this is a thing of beauty. So the the question to you guys is, how does this impact the mineral estate? And how does it impact the environment of what we're doing here? So I thought it would be a good idea to go through some of the tools and techniques we're gonna use for construction and what we're really talking about. So the first one is the Middle Mile. Middle Miles, those are the main trunk lines. All of the, all of the lines you saw in those previous maps are Middle Mile. That's the main trunk line that that will carry the fiber optic cable. The predominant cable we're using is a two hundred and eighty-eight strand fiber optic cable. The fiber optics is about the width of a single piece of, single human hair. And uh, on this sheet here, you can see the size of the fiber optic, that cable. If you look at it, it's about, about a little less than an inch in diameter. And next to it is the conduit that is gonna, that that fiber optics gonna go into. And it's a two inch conduit. Actually, it's a little less than that. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna follow predominantly the ODOT easements that already exist. The, and we're gonna use boring and trenching tools. We're gonna bore trench to a depth of primarily about thirty-six inches. If we need to, we could come up to twenty-four inches shallow to go over things. But basically, it's it's a thirty-six inch depth. We're gonna bore a hole, put the conduit and then run the fiber through the conduit. And like I said, the conduit laid is two inches in diameter and houses a single two hundred and eighty-eight strand of fiber optic cable. The final mile is the, where we tap off of the Middle Mile, the main trunk line, and we go fiber to the home. We have received funding from NTIA to fund fiber to the house for native households. Okay, so we're gonna do this for native households that are within around three hundred feet of the fiber optic line. Uh, those that are further off that line, we will do uh, high speed fixed Wi-Fi off the towers. So we'll give service to them as well. But it'll be high speed, it just won't be quite as fast as fiber optics will. Uh, it'll be probably about a hundred megabits down and a hundred megabits up. Most of what people get now, especially in OSH County, at best is about seventeen down and three up. So it's a huge jump just for the fiber fixed Wi-Fi. When we do fiber to the home, it's gonna be like gigabit down and gigabit up. So what's that mean for for people in OSH County? It means that they will be able to have three or four computers running, streaming two or three TVs, doing virtual reality, online gaming, all at the same time, and nobody will notice it. You won't see that buffering circle going on, so. But uh, the fiber to the home will still be boring and using mini excavators and and trenching to a depth of thirty-six inches, coming up to about twenty-four if we need to go over utilities and things like that. But the conduit's a lot smaller, the conduit's a one inch diameter conduit. And uh, the, it'll house a single fiber. We can see it's about a little under a half inch, that single fiber. The tools we're using are shown on the next side. We've got the boring machine, which basically starts at one place. We can control the depth and width and angle of the bore. And we'll bore down and go as far as we can typically. About a hundred, a hundred feet of concrete or something like that.
Yeah, depending on which machine being used, anywhere from uh, one hundred to, I mean, up to five hundred feet.
Yeah, okay. So we'll bore, so on those, there won't be any surface damage at all or or anything like that compared to the trencher where we're gonna come in with a trench. We're, we're looking at a trench, you can see a trench is probably about, you know, eight to ten inches wide, somewhere around there. And then the mini excavator, we dig down, that's typically for finding utility locations and places to start.
Will you have any risers coming out of this line?
Any what?
Risers.
There will be pond cabinets periodically uh, that will be used for making connections and drops off there to the houses and things like that.
And you did say in some areas you're gonna do a line on your trunk lines?
Yeah, we'll come off the trunk lines to to individual houses.
Are you gonna put them both in at the same time?
Oh, wait.
Are you gonna put both lines in at the same?
No, not phone lines. You can use, but you can use our system for what's called VoIP, Voice Over IP.
Thank you.
You can do phones with that. Okay, we also have sixteen towers going in, and this is probably gonna be the most impactful uh, as far as the mineral estate. Uh, the towers are designed to be twenty-eight feet wide, twenty-eight feet in, well, length and width, and about five to six feet in depth. And then at the bottom, we'll put in a rebar and then, of course, pour about a foot and a half of concrete. And then on top of that, we'll use filler, which will be from the thing, the material we excavated from that location to begin with and put back in there as filler. The presentation says three and a half feet below that is packed filler. It's actually three and a half feet above that concrete is the packed filler. And you can see that some of the tools and techniques, there's a picture of what the excavated site is prior to pouring rebar and then the actual columns and cylinders that the tower will sit on. And uh. So what, the main thing I'm sure the council is concerned about is what's the impact as far as to the mineral state and to uh, the area as a whole. Well, basically, the impact to the, to the area should be minimal at best, nonexistent most likely. Uh, any material that we do excavate will be used and refill, to refill the location. Or in the case of towers, it'll be crushed and used as filler. And anything, any large rocks we excavate will be returned to the OSH Nation on however the mineral state wants us to, however the mineral council wants us to do with it. I mean, if you wanna tell us to put them in the rock quarry, that's where they'll go, or whatever you tell us. And after a first period of growth, I think you won't see any, there'll be no evidence of our underground buried fiber optic cables. So, are there any questions?
I just wanna say that we have that five thousand cubic yard element on the, the crushing and fermenting. If if you're to exceed that, that will, that will have to have a two fourteen lease. But if you do not, not say you're going down the ODOT's right of ways.
Correct.
I don't, I don't see much of that happening and you don't have sales of this product. So I don't believe that that will be a problem. I think when it comes down, you, to the project, you bring it back to us just so we can sign the letter and possibly waving that in this certain situation. Until I can done tailor, it's gonna be areas I provide review when you get off that right of way. With that, council, do we have any questions? Councilman Bard and the second church.
I'll yield to the second chair.
Thank you, council.
Oh, there's just got a general question of, so I'll be able to use my smart TV out to the ranch?
Yep.
Cool.
Before I get to use it, he said seventeen three, I think we're at five one.
We're a cannon string.
I'm in third world country down there.
Oh, we could probably increase your speed with a couple of tin cans and a string.
Yes, sir. Call Lake, call off. Captain?
Thank you, Chairman. Are you finished?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, so you mentioned right of ways, you're going to use the existing Department of Transportation.
Yes, primarily, there's a couple, especially on the Eastern Bowery Project going out to Bartlesville where they're getting new ones. And historical preservation is clear as to use the old right of ways, but a couple of places, we'll have to use the new ones. But uh, by far, as you can tell from the maps, they're predominantly following existing.
So, so none of this, none of these routes are going to be off of the DOT right of way?
Some of them probably will, to be honest.
Um, like there's a couple, there's somewhere on below Fairfax uh, on Highway eighteen before it turns on to Highway twenty
that we, our, our petroleum land department or petroleum land contractor is working to identify the private ownership and obtain leases for that, for the surface impact.
Yes, of course.
So there, there will probably be some.
Okay. What is the width of your right of way requirement?
Well, how much? Sorry, this is Colin Giblin, he's the resident engineer from ACRS for us on this project.
Um, the width of these that they're seeking is usually uh, about five feet, five to ten feet for placement and then a temporary, like up to thirty foot, just to get equipment in so you can actually put it in, that sort of thing. Uh, thirty foot one, like I said, being temporary. The places where we're seeking easements are places where we've identified that ODOT will have road widening projects where they, it will possibly disturb the right of way and require uh, any lines in the right of way to be moved. Well, if our line is in the right of way, these would be brand new lines 'cause these are areas that we've uh, uh, talked to ODOT and they told us within the next eight years they intend to do. Well, if it's in the right of way and they need it moved, then it's at the cost of the nation then to move it. Whereas if we can end those areas just in case, you know, uh, they need us to move, if we go ahead and go just on the other side of the right of way, then it's on an easement, a private easement, then even should they widen the easement, they would have to use eminent domain and then it's ODOT's cost to motivate any cables. So that, that's the reason in those areas that we're seeking any sort of private easement at all.
Okay, so we're familiar with the existing right of ways of the DOT to some degree. So my, my concern is you won't be increasing those existing ones to accommodate you. You'll be within the boundaries of the existing easement or right of way.
Well, where, where we would be outside the existing easement, they're planning on widening the easement anyway.
Okay.
So when they widen it, then they would incorporate our, what, where we are.
Okay.
As part of that.
And so uh. I'm concerned about the new right of way or easements that you would need on private owner, on private lands. That could adversely affect us and so of our, it could restrict our development of our minerals. We would wanna know before you get any of that, where that's going to be. Before we'd want you to do that. I, my concern is we have hundreds, about thousands of miles of oil and gas. Infrastructure, some in use and some abandoned, some maybe temporarily abandoned. I'm talking about gas pipelines, oil, crude, crude oil line, oil and gas flow lines for wells. A lot of times those lines are utilizing some of the right of ways. Sometimes they just cross under them.
Do we, do we know where they are?
No, you don't.
So we don't know depth either?
No, you, for the most, some of the lines. No, you, for the most, some of the lines you would and they're documented, but I would say most of the flow lines and, and producers, oil and gas flow lines and some of their electric lines are not identified. So that's, could be problematic if you were going to, it's not like if you call, what we used to call call OK, you know, for lines.
Call OK?
A lot of our infrastructure wouldn't hear on that. Certainly our utilities would, our telephone companies would, but our oil and gas producers, for the most part, they don't get the call from call OK to go out and flag their flow lines. A lot of ours, a lot of our producers have their lines on top of the ground, but not all of them. Some of our electric lines, some of them are old Rita cable, which is not even.
Allowed.
Allowed, you know, I don't know.
No, cut that off.
Existing stuff is kinda grandfathered in, maybe not officially, but a lot of, a lot of the service to our, our infrastructure is inadequate in that regard. But my concern is how it would affect the existing development, the existing production and future development, particularly if you're gonna go off and start sending all this stuff to homes that are off the beaten path. You said within three hundred feet, that would be, that you would lay to now, it could be extended in the future. But if you do three hundred feet throughout the whole county off of your system, that's, that's quite a bit of our surface footprint, that'd be a big footprint. So we would wanna, we'd wanna make sure that wouldn't interrupt our production and our ability to, and I'll give you an example. You lay a line from off the road to somebody's ranch house and you're going three hundred feet out, well, what if that was going right across a location that one of our producers has under leach and wants to develop a well on? How would we deal with that? Is there a certain distance that we would need to be away from? When I say we, our producers would need to be away from your line to drill their well and having heavy transports go over the top of it, back and forth. These are just things that come to my mind as far as this activity that you're proposing.
One, okay, a lot, lot there to work with and it drops. First of all, the, one of the advantages in fiber optics is it pretty much not, it's pretty much resistant or impermeable to interference. So we don't have to worry about, you know, interfering with us or us interfering with somebody else as far as once it's in place. So I think once we get it in place, that's fine. Some of your, some of your pipelines and things like that, I'm assuming they're not plastic, so they're probably detectable, we have probably.
A lot of it's polytype.
A lot of what?
I'd say more, we have more plastic than we do steel.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. So we'll have to do the best we can as far as identifying it, locating it, and if we can locate it, we'll do a technique called pothole, where we go down and make a pothole and dig down as far as we need to see if we're gonna have anything at, you know, at several locations through there without hopefully hitting anything and damaging it. I, I will tell you that we will hit things. It's gonna, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen.
And our producers will be doing the same.
Yeah.
You've seen going up and down the road, backhoes, and they're out there laying new lines all the time, replacing old lines, not only electric lines, but flow lines, gas lines. In this, all this infrastructure that you put on the map, that's quite a bit, how many total miles is this whole project of all the phases?
Close to, the yellow is about two hundred, two hundred miles, linear miles, and then the, the middle mile is probably gonna add another hundred, hundred and fifty miles, so.
Yeah, that's a lot of miles. That's a lot of digging and I, I'm gonna think that there's going to have to be some kind of coordination with the oil and gas producers.
Sure.
Where you're gonna be doing all this activity. And I, just a concern, I'm, I'm sure I'll have more questions, but another, one that came to mind is with data, and it was already mentioned about being able to use a fiber optic broadband for like wifi calling.
Correct.
So for the dead spots that we have in Osage County, would there be a way for somebody traveling down one of the highways where it hits a dead spot, that maybe be able to have their wifi calling on and maybe be able to tap into the broadband? Is that a possibility as you're traveling?
Not, not without, so somehow you have to have to get a radio transmitter attached into the fiber optic and that, that's stationary, so it becomes fixed wifi and it gets transmitted that way. We're gonna have the towers up. I think probably the best and more accurate solution for dead space and cell coverage is gonna be having AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, those guys put radios on our towers and it will expand the coverage and fill in some of the dead spots.
Are you talking to them now or are they talking to you or, I mean, that's kind of a big?
T-Mobile, we actually have started talking about, they wanna borrow some of our spectrum, our frequency spectrums and they wanna swap and stuff. So we have started some negotiation, not negotiations, some discussions with them. But we're probably a year away from having those towers up, keep them started and up. So we have plenty of time to, to give them and expand on that.
Okay, then I also was wondering, a lot of the producers are, well, there's new technology out, it's not so new, that just had been economic to utilize for our producers. You know, keeping in mind that our producers are operating stripper production and can't necessarily always afford the top of the line equipment that's out there. But some of the equipment that's out there, as you know, from your background, monitoring type equipment that can be put on tank batteries and flow lines and, and utilities to, to, to help control things with controllers and shut offs and data transmission. Would there be a way for the oil and gas producers to utilize your broadband to, to tap into, transmit data off their tank batteries maybe or anything?
Absolutely, absolutely, especially with our cell coverage as far as our, the sixteen towers we've got laid out, we could get some pretty extensive coverage in a lot of those areas. And, and we're not against, we're not opposed to adding additional towers, especially on the middle mile section, which is up in the northwest part of the state, by the county. You know, and, and the more tower coverage we have, the more the producers could use it directly and actually they would get that, there's wifi signal from those towers.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor Redcorn.
Thank you, chair. I appreciate you coming in and bringing your presentation and what you plan to do there. We, as you've heard, we have a lot of utilities going in, in the reservation. Not always do they come here and tell us what they're doing, they're just doing it.
So, really?
Yeah, yeah. So we appreciate you coming in and, and so that we're aware, you know, I think we're gonna, we did, we did, um, look at, we've talked from time to time about monitoring, using, you know, systems where it has level devices in the tank batteries, flow line or gas flow meters, those kind of things. The biggest thing that came up was a dead space reservation. They didn't have cell coverage or anything, so we just kinda fell flat, you know, the discussion. Well, now I'm hearing and also kinda heard from the police, our national police, they weren't totally covering throughout the whole county and that's gonna, it's maybe help, right? Whereas eventually.
Yeah, one of the things we've been doing is we've been talking with like Bobby Toll Chief and Chief Nicholas Williams about putting emergency management radio transmitters on our towers. We could actually absolutely do that. I already told them that they would have a standing approval for that. You know, and expanding, I know that the OMPD would like to get into the nine-one-one dispatch aspect of it too and, and, yeah, we, we definitely, that's the advantage of building this out as the Osage Nation is where we can do things for service to our people and that's what we're working for.
Seemed, seemed like they were leaned on having to go through the county because of the coverage they have. Now they have the option to possibly run it all themselves. In light matter, I wanna pitch this, the mineral council, if we desire, desire to go to these areas where we're monitoring throughout the whole reservation, we have the ability to maybe communicate with your team, how can we accomplish that? What kind of devices do we need, you know, to kind of track monitoring and production out there that, so kinda help us?
Yeah, well, we've got propagation studies, our engineers have done that show the coverage and it's fairly extensive. There's, intentionally we've not done much in the northwest corner because, to be honest, Cal doesn't use a lot of broadband up there. So, we had, intentionally haven't done a whole lot up there, but if we need to, we can always put additional towers up there and then microwave signal to them and connect those towers. Two of the gray ore towers are microwave.
True.
And not connected by fiber optic. So we're not constrained with where the fiber optic cable is if we need an additional tower to make sure that the mineral council has coverage in an area that's a high producer that.
We'll stay focused with the two fourteen at this time.
Well, I, we've had a lot of presentations come through to help us monitor volumes, sure, our shareholders get paid fairly, you know, barrels and the gas flow. And now I think with this total coverage, we can possibly launch into that discussion and be able to cover all our areas.
And we ran to repeaters.
Right. It's kind of nation driven. Us, through our own means, kinda like the police officers or, or OMPD, they're doing their own thing, we can, we can have monitoring too.
I'm not sure what it's worth, but you have my remembrance that you can use any infrastructure we build or have that's necessary for the mineral council. And I, and I, I would also go further to, to address some of Councilman Rebar's concerns about, you know, notification and coordination. We would be happy to come up and give you guys, whether you wanted every council meeting or once a month or once or four, whatever you guys want, we'll be happy to come up and give you status reports and let you know. We, we plan on working closely with you guys to say, okay, we're like that Highway eighteen south of Fairfax to twenty, we're going on the east side of the existing road, which is outside the current easement because we know that they're gonna broaden, widen that. So, you know, so we can work with you and we'll be happy to share with you what ODOT is currently planning, you know, because we've been working very closely with them and then what we're doing as far as private easements and directions. So we'll be happy to work with you guys on all that.
One quick question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
The railroad.
Right of ways.
The railroad would? Right of ways. Have y'all considered, I mean, in my mind, when the reservation was made, they took those pieces out and gave the rest, or blessed the rest to the Osages. Well, now they're gone. And my understanding is if that stuff's gone, then it reverts back to the Osages. And, you know, we've had that discussion, I don't know if y'all have considered that we use our old established right of ways.
I honestly cannot, I can't, I can't think of, we, we didn't consider the first type of rails to right of way.
I was thinking black land all out, but at any case, those were quit claim on the process, even on restricted property. When that actual came out, if you would take your fence out, you got to the other side. But naturally the large ranchers up there, that's the first thing they did, stick theirs out, so they encompassed it. Then like in Hominy, you had people start to sell it.
I have, I have trust laying down, our new superintendent down in that area and when the railroad went, left, somebody tried to claim that land that ran through our, trust a lot. So we called the BIA, they came out and said, you gotta remove that fence that belongs to that trust holder. So I'm just questioning, you know, do we have the same blessing up here that we, that, that's our property in my view? Unless it's been specifically conveyed by us to somebody else, but that's just a, thank you, chair. I don't know if you have any comments on that.
Councilor Redcorn, thank you, chair.
And then we wanna wrap up.
Thank you, you haven't been here. I heard one councilman say years back about the railroads, he said, once they left, anybody who wants to live on there, can live on there, can take over, take over that land, whatever it were, how much it is, for a certain amount of time, it belongs to them. I've heard Mel Corr talking that years ago, I don't know if that's true or not.
That's, that's giveaway land we can have.
Go to A-Ban and up the hill there, there's, old railroad track goes through there and those people moved in there and I think they lived there for a certain amount of time.
That was under a quit claim.
Anyway, y'all work pretty close with the historical preservation people.
Oh, yeah. We've gotta be, we're really good friends with them.
Do you ever run into any graves or anything or?
Big one?
You ever run into any graves or anything that might be in the way or something?
No, no, I mean, not to this point. I mean, we're, they're currently doing projects and, and with, the way GTA structures it is, is the entire project has to go through environmental approval, environmental analysis and historical preservation, which is a part of that. We've asked for three individual projects because they don't touch any of the other things to be called independent so we could actually, as soon as we get environmental historical done on them, we can start construction. The western boundary, the one connecting Hawk City, the eastern boundary, the one connecting Bartlesville, and then Pawhuska Indian Village or Pawhuska Indian Camp, those of all three we've asked to be, 'cause that'll connect to the Carers Network. We've asked all three of those to be declared independent. We have finished the environmental analysis and the historical preservation on the western boundary. The eastern boundary, we've not done, not finished the environmental analysis because ODOT didn't want us in their way. And, but we have approval from the western, from the historical preservation for the old Highway sixty easements. The new Highway sixty easements, we have not gotten yet, so we're doing that. And historical preservation is finishing up at Pawhuska Indian Camp. As we speak, they should, they'll finish that next week and that'll take five into the home, in, to all the homes in, in, in Indian Camp.
Thank you, councilor.
I think, Mr. Redcorn brought up a great point. I was speaking with the attorney several years ago and that property that's downtown where the nation is gonna be starting to fill in our health clinic and all that, was all railroad property at one time. And once, I think it's, I think it was back like seventy-eight or nine, come back and reverted back, I believe, and we were certain to drive it back to the nation's ownership. Therefore the lines that are scattered like pipelines throughout the reservation, I would think that would be a great thing, you're not having to, you know, go to individual landowners versus being able to do some diligence with the BIA, identifying those railroad right of ways. It's gonna be a pretty good coup there that's probably, I'm, I'm almost certain that come back to the nation's ownership back in the seventies. Anyway, I just, I could be wrong, but it seems like that's sparking that, however.
Well, in the, in the town of Pawhuska, just like Fairfax, the majority of the deployment fibers is area. So we're, we've got pole grounds with the city of Pawhuska, there are utility poles and also Fairfax. So we'll be running fiber optics from pole to pole. And so anything that, that, you know, whether it's trust land or private land or whatever it is, we'll be able to get to area. And also, anything that your producers have, we can always jump up and go aerial and back down. So if we have to go aerial around that, we can do that as well.
Can you encase it? Cause Paul brought up a good idea when we're sending our bawtails in to wait alone.
Is there a conduit for the rural?
We can go deep enough, borrow under the road and protect it?
Yeah, if we go underground, we do conduit and put it in there, but if we go aerial, it's just.
We'll, we'll. We'll go with Congressman Redcorn.
I think Mr. Trumbull, from my understanding is once the fiber's in, it's not impacted by the surrounding environment as much. So once it's in, we should be back to our minerals are less impacted.
Correct.
Going forward. So I think it's a, then.
Then what we're going to have to do with this when a producer comes in and just land a pipe and cuts our fiber, we'll have to fix it.
You'll have to mark it.
Yeah, we.
That's up to you.
Yeah, we, we, when we do the conduit, we put a mark, a trace line in there so we can, you know, locate it.
Or just wrap it like a gas line. Congressman.
Yeah, just real briefly here, the, most of your life is going to be along the existing right of way.
Correct.
But it's, my main concern was when you're going to go off of that trunk line that's already established right of way or something else, in this case, the ODOT. And you're going to go to somebody's ranch house, a rural home, that's when you're going to be cutting across the country. You might accidentally enter, you know, come across some, some of these unidentified, unmarked flow lines. So I just think it'd be a good idea, and I'm sure you probably would anyway, but it'd be a good idea for you to check with the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the Osage Agency, find out what oil and gas operations are in that area that you're getting ready to go across country with. So that you can reach out to the, some of the producers. There may not be a producer that has a well on that property. It may be a producer two miles down the road whose line goes through that lease, that lease and then through that lease. So, but the Bureau of Indian Affairs would have a, a record of who the nearby operators were so you could give them a, a heads up of your activity. And maybe your field guys meet with their field guys and you go walk it out.
That's great, I agree, make sure we go talk to the BIA.
And the highly skilled individual for the trenching.
You are.
And the highly skilled individual for the trench.
Oh, he's going to hit there.
Is that Drew, Drew going to be doing that?
He's the senior project manager for the fiber of the homes, which is probably where the most bulk of this problem is going to occur.
Yes, sir. Mr. Trumbull, I think we bring in the phases of your projects, just like the council has talked to you about. I see where you're not going to run into problem on a couple of areas. I do feel like when you go outside of the right of ways, we do coordinate with the Bureau of Indian Affairs, especially their field man, someone can help you with the project or that. With that being said, counsel, I'd like to move on and just bring the project to us and we'll get ready to take care of it appropriately.
You bet.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Do we need to get a, a letter or whatever?
Until you bring us in, the actual layout of the process of putting in, implementing the line, that's when we'll come back. And I could sign it if you're not going over to five thousand square yards.
Okay.
On the permitted.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
I don't think you will.
We've got all of our projects broken out, we'll pull those together.
I think that you do hurry up and put the one into Hominy.
Well, the Hominy, actually, the Hominy, Rouse's House in the Hominy is covered by the R U S reconnect free grant. We've already passed environmental analysis and historical preservation for that. So we're ready to actually start, start putting that in as soon as possible.
Yes, sir. And on your archaeological one oh six inadvertent finds, you're going to hit them up there. I can tell you that, that's the land I, we, we all covered. Coming out of that department, I'd just say that I see us putting up repeaters on with you to help all of our programs. We might even have to go and borrow some energy to get that. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Brother, thank you, sir. It's good to see you again late and we get that Oscar. My God, this car is special.
Why can't we get something like that?
We are. Thank you, counsel, Ike, going on down. We've been asked that, we have the EPA Bridget Six, Class Six side inquiry. Mr. Johnson, Chris Tingey and Mrs. Alverda, is she still on? Please, sir.
I might turn on.
Is anyone here with the Bridget Six?
Yes, Ken Jones here and also Brandon Maples is on the line as well. He's our Class Six meeting and project tracker coordinator. And Chris Tingey is unfortunately at the dentist's.
Woo, yes, sir. Go run ahead.
Okay, well, as we talked about on the nineteen last, just last month, if we got any kind of contact about Class Six, we told you we were coming to you to talk to you, to talk to you about it. So here we are today. We have had a contact and Brandon just turned his video on too. He actually works remotely from Oklahoma City, so he is almost in the neighborhood.